Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 28th, 2022 Litchfield Board of Selectment Meeting. The Board has just come out of a non-public session under RSA 91A32C reputation and a paperwork review. I'd like to call the meeting to order again and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the review and approval of the consent items. We have an account payroll manifest of November 22nd, 2022, in the sum of $37,460.80 and November 29th, 2022, in the sum of $2,546,171.12. We have a payroll manifest of November 23rd, 2022, in the sum of $52,235.30 and December 1st, 2022, in the sum of $56,381.35. We have MAP 22, Lot 80 Tax Bill Adjustment. We have the authorization to transfer funds in the sum of $43,575.57 from the Fire Department Expendable Trust Fund. We have the authorization to transfer funds in the sum of $60,000 from the Public Works Department Expenditure Transfer. Wow. We have the October Treasurer Reconciliation, Litchfield School District Payment Authorization for 2023. We have the primary DRA Assessment to Sales Ratio, and we have Property Tax Settlement Warrant for the sum of 428 items. Are there any items members would like to remove from consent?
What's the payment authorization for 2023?
That is the monthly, when we transfer the money for the school.
And that happens on the first business day of the month?
Usually it's the closest to it because the treasurer has to be the second authorization on the bank, so it's when she comes in on Tuesdays. So it's ever, whatever's closest to that.
Okay, but not before.
It could be before, like this week it's tomorrow because Wednesday, the first is on Friday or Thursday, whenever the first is this week.
I thought we always did it the first business day of the month.
Oh, we can only do it when the treasurer comes in because she's the second authorization for it.
Do we have a motion to approve consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ms. Queenan.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. LaSalle's. All those in favor, Mr. Larry.
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenan?
Aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries 500. Is there any other business members would like to add this evening? I believe Ms. Kleiner would like to add a non-public at the end.
Yes, please.
Under RSA 91A:32C reputation. Public input will occur no earlier than 6:45 PM. First item of business is going to be Jason Brennan Conservation Committee Update. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
You want to do public input first?
We could do that.
Thank you very much for having me, and I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and give the Board an update on things happening at the Conservation Commission. And I put together a little agenda now. I'm going to do this all in under 10 minutes. I'm not going to be here forever. Put together a little agenda of things I wanted to talk about. The first things first is, over the past six months or so, we have been putting together this land preservation strategy. And as you may recall, I think it was last year when I joined the Conservation Commission, one of the things that was mentioned that there was no strategy for acquiring or preserving property in town. So over the past six months, we put that together. What I would like to do is spend maybe just a few minutes just flipping through the pages just to show you what we, the work that we've done and what was involved and what the outcomes are. So this strategy does not specifically target properties that we would go after, but it provides a framework for how we would acquire and preserve property in town. So that's really the main driver for it. And if you just kind of flip through the pages, you know, Section 1 at the beginning just gives an introduction to the study. Section 2, Land Preservation Goals, this really outlines the goals of how we approach preserving land in town. If you kind of go through this, goal number one is when we're looking at property, it is, one of the main things is to help preserve town character and historic resources. Goal number two is acquiring property to help protect natural resources. Goal three, preserving farmland. Goal four, increasing residential recreational opportunities. Goal five, not taking a shotgun approach when we're looking to preserve land and buy a piece over there, a piece over there, a piece over there. Make sure that we're doing it with a purpose to try to connect things together. Goal six is to maybe be able to acquire a certain number of acreage where we could actually create a town forest, and there's very limited land to be able to do that. Everything, all the chips would have to fall into play. Goal seven is to really articulate to the landowners on properties that might be of interest to us and communicate with them, so if they ever do decide to sell their property that we would be contacted and at least be able to maybe put in an offer on it. Number eight, nine, and 10 really involves collaborating with town departments and other agencies, engaging citizens, and encouraging appropriate use of conservation property. So that's like the big land preservation goals that we have. If you flip to Section 3, that gives a nice little map of some of our key conservation properties, and we're going through the process right now to make sure that this map is accurate and complete. Section 4 is kind of interesting. Last fall, and I think I was in here talking about this last fall, we sent out a survey to citizens and town boards, and 235 citizens replied to that survey. And what was interesting, the results of the survey were pretty interesting. Number one, 87% of the folks that responded to the survey felt that conserving land was either extremely important, five out of five or 10 out of 10, or very, very important. So we went basically on a scale of 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, 1 being not important, 5 being important, 87% of the folks said it was either a 4 or a 5. And then if you look at the lower left-hand part of the, part of the page, it says the top six priorities. So out of everything everybody says and sifting through the data, these were the top six things that folks said in town, that they, if we conserve property in town, they want property to support protection of farmland and historic resources, protect natural resources, protect town character. Those are the three major themes. But then if you look at 4, 5, and 6, really deal with controlling development, protecting habitat, and providing public access. So out of those 235 respondents, those are the top six things that rose to the top. Then if you take a look at Section 5, we went out, we did the research to figure out methods for conserving land. And if you kind of look through that, there's outright land purchase, we can purchase easements, we can purchase development rights, we can encourage open space development, we can protect town-owned land, there are some town-owned properties that aren't under conservation, and we can do that. So these are methods that we can use to help protect property. Section 6 simply outlines funding sources that are available to us. And a lot of those are related to the Conservation Fund that we have, we have a Farmland Protection Fund. And what we've been seeing out there in other communities is, some other communities in our region are actually going for bond appropriation to purchase conservation property. So instead of, it's, to me, it sounds like you've got a line of credit. So you go out for a bond for $5 million, and you don't use that until you need to, until you need to use it, but you have it available to you. So some communities are taking that path because you never know when a piece of property is going to come up for sale, but you might just need the capital to do it. And then the last bullet down the bottom is, we researched all the grant programs available through the state and have a pretty good understanding of what's available out there. And then kind of winding down here, Section 7 is a nice little infographic that are basically the checklist items of things that we would be looking at when purchasing property. And when we rank pieces of property, we figure out how many bullet items that these things, these things check off. And then Section 8 actually adds a geographic component to that. So we're looking at a couple of different things. We're looking at it from the angle of, does it protect historic or farmland resources? Is it adjacent to other conservation lands? And then in addition to that, where in town is it? So if we get two pieces of property that come up, do we want a big piece of property that no one can get access to in one corner of town? Or do we want to spend more for a smaller piece of property that maybe protects a piece of land on 3A? So it kind of helps us make those decisions. And then lastly, the last two pages here, Section 9 is, we put together what we call a decision matrix to just help us figure out, help us compare and contrast properties against each other essentially. And there are, you know, three factors there. There's a location factor, there's property characteristics, which we're on the previous page, and then the cost of those properties. So this helps us, when we're looking at properties, it helps us just organize things and figure out where to focus. And then lastly, on Section 10, really outlines the recommendations and the results of the strategy, and I'll just like quickly fly through, through these. So with this strategy, we want to make sure that we continually update this plan on a yearly basis. Bullet point number two is, we're going to make sure that we complete a conservation property inventory and assessment, make sure that we know where all our conservation land is. We have, we have conservation land that's come through development that we might just not have a dot on the, dot on the map for, and Joan has a pretty good understanding of that. Develop, throw the map out on the, on the table and develop a list of desired properties, and then contact the landowners on a yearly basis to just tell them that we're out there. Develop a funding plan and then take a look at grants and hold workshops so that we can ensure that we're moving in, in the right direction. So this right here is just kind of the framework, as I, as I call it, to help us make decisions when it, when it comes to property. The next step in the game is that through the next few Conservation Commission meetings, we're going to be rolling the map out on the table and starting to take a look at individual pieces of property and then contacting, or just making contact with landowners, saying, hey, we, if this ever comes up for sale, we have interest in it. Fully know that people are free to do what they want with their land, but it'd be nice if we're just contacted, just maybe we could work something out. And that's it. So this is an internal document, it's not something that's, you know, we make it available out to folks, but it's really for internal guidance only.
That's great.
Any questions on this at all?
As usual, good work.
Happy to see it.
If you see something that can be flipped into zoning ordinance, let us know if it can help, right?
Yeah, so that's, the next thing is, we kind of figured out what we were looking at, now we got to go over on the planning side of the fence to ensure that the things that we have here are incorporated, or at least we discuss it with, with the master plan, with how we develop properties and things like that. So that's that.
Question for you.
Yes.
Grassy Pond is managed by the...
The state of, I think Grassy Pond is the state of New Hampshire. Joan has the download on that one.
Is there public access to that?
Yes, there is. Joan walks her dog out back there. It's on one, it's accessible from one of the side roads on Pinecrest.
Okay.
On the same side as the middle school. I think it tees off through there.
I think it goes behind our mast area.
It's quite an interesting property.
And if you look at Grassy Pond, which is, I think is number 12 on the map, it really starts connecting over to number 3, which is a piece that we own behind the library. And so you can start connecting some of these things together and maybe you can make a little...
Unless it's adjacent to the schools.
It is, yep.
You can park at the school. You can park at the school.
A couple other tidbit things, so back to the agenda here on land maintenance. One thing that we work with John on is we developed a report of problem form, and this sits up at pretty much all the conservation properties. Anywhere we have a kiosk. We also tagged along with Recreation, and they use this as well. So these are up there on the kiosks, and we have had people that have scanned this on their phone and sent us that, what they, they find a problem out there. We had one lady complain about a dog being off-leash and nearly attacking her kid, you know, we get those types of things as well. But that, this is working out very well. The other thing that we do with this is, whenever we maintain a property, scan this on our phone, key it in, and now we have a maintenance log of everything that's done on each piece of property. Conservation Commission members, we do monthly property checks. We actually laid out a map out on the table at our last Conservation Commission meeting on all our pieces of property, basically stuck pins on the map on, on maintenance items that are needed on those pieces of property, and slowly but surely, we're checking those off. Couple of key ones are trying to get rid of the bittersweet across from the Old Town Hall, reclaiming the muster field. It's, right now, it's all, all brushy, we're going to try to reclaim that, that land, put in a new trail at Moors Falls, and then we're trying to get rid of all that scrub along 3A where the river access is. So those are some of the things, some of the dots we've, we put on the map. We also, with Recreation, purchased a tractor this year, and that's been working out awesome. I think on both fronts. I mean, it has saved us a ton of time in doing maintenance work, and actually, I don't even think we could have done maintenance work without having that tractor. So that's worked out really well. The third item on the bullet list, Conservation Programs, we have, what I'd like to do in 2023 is to have an event or two, whether it be a night hike, whether it be photography class or outdoor photography, or Joan was planning on doing something related to bird watching, so we're going to try to have one or two community events in, in 2023, in addition to the Fishing Derby that we have right now. Also going to try to get the community garden going in 2023, we're going to have to talk to Kim about that. There's some legal mumbo jumbo going back and forth between the landowner and us, and when Troy left, it just kind of stopped. And so we need to pick that up probably within the next month or so. And I don't know how much background information you have on that, but probably none.
I'll look.
Okay. And then lastly, just commission tidbits, so we have a full board and one alternate, and we're looking for additional alternates. And I think things are working out pretty good. Everybody's pitching in. We've got Harry working on the Fishing Derby, Joan has tremendous knowledge of things going on in town, and is our wetland specialist, and Diane is good with talking with, with people, and, you know, so it works out pretty well.
Guys have done a great job.
And so that's it. I like to come in maybe once or twice a year to give an update like this. Anything to add, Mr. Lynch?
I have nothing. He's done well. But I understand Merrimack is, has, has some incognito efforts here.
If they do, you need to let us know because we're going to, we're going to set up the launching station, we're going to make it higher than it is now.
I have my spies out.
Okay. Let me know. There's an informal war going, going on between Litchfield and Merrimack, but Merrimack doesn't know about it.
We're going to reclaim the islands in the middle of the river.
The Scouts look for a lot of conservation projects, they have to do so much, hours of that. I'm not saying abuse, you know, the hours on it, but, you know, maybe reach out to the Scouts for that.
We've had kids from the high school with their sophomore and senior project help out with, with various things at conservation and recreation areas for that matter.
And with the Boy Scouts, they learn how to use an axe, so they'd be candy as heck.
But they have to get so much service, conservation hours per rank.
I'd love the Boy Scouts to be able to clean out that cellar hole across from the old fire station and reclaim that to what it once was, and we can put little markers around it or something.
Make sure you talk to Dr. Cowal about where you do that.
Everything we do on that piece of property is run through to Historic Commission, times 10.
Just keep an eye on that 66666 number, in case it turns to the 3333. Depends on what happens, warrant article, right, on that. Because you rewrite this, you're saying.
CIP, yes.
Yeah, you say you write this every one or two years, right?
Good.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for all the work.
Thanks. Oh, I do have one more question, I'm sorry. The metal detector policy that we're discussing is on town property. Is that considered conservation as well, or do they? I don't know who's on the deed, I don't know how that, that works.
Town property is all town property.
So when they get grants for conservation and buy property, it's still owned by the town, or they own it?
He owns.
I'm not sure how that works.
I do not know.
Well, they're under the town, right?
My understanding is the town, town owns it.
Okay.
Yep.
And I know that Joan is putting that on the agenda for our meeting on Thursday.
We are exploring a metal detector policy on town-owned land, which they just have to get written permission or verbal, however we're going to vote on that.
Correct.
Just so you're aware, because if you're opening it up, you know, because you want people on the property, it's just whether they do the metal detecting.
Okay.
They just need approval. I wasn't sure how that worked. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
I don't mind picking up nails. I don't mind picking up the nails.
Kim, I just sent you the last correspondence on the community garden.
Okay, thank you.
Back in August.
I heard there was one guy out there. You were, you were there.
Next, we have the request for the holiday parade. Ms. Kleiner.
So Mr. French brought this to me, and Captain Scotty received it. It's a request for the holiday parade in the spirit of Litchfield, and what a beautiful job they did across the way this weekend. It's on December 9th, Friday, from 6:30 to 7:30. If you open the document, there is a list of streets, 37 of them to be exact, which outlines their whole route, so.
I think they're following the fire truck parade.
I believe you're right, yes.
Yeah, I don't drive by my house anymore.
So Mr. French brought it so that they could receive the Board's approval to hold the parade.
Who's sponsoring that?
Spirit of Litchfield.
And there are subcommittee under the Recreation Commission.
Okay. This is the Christmas...
It's a Christmas.
Yeah, they want to do a Christmas parade this year prior to the lighting over at Roy Memorial.
Is it with cars, or are they marching? It's nighttime, right?
It, it is motorized vehicles.
I was going to say, it's 6:30 at night.
And Mr. French, the police have asked for them to be registered vehicles if they're on, you know, town streets.
Looks like the permits were signed. I have no issue with it, I think it'll be a great event.
I do too.
I make a motion, we allow it.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynch.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenan. All those in favor, Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenan?
Aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries 500. Next, we have proposed library warrant. Ms. Kleiner.
So I apologize, these are, I did start a proposed warrant list that you will find lower in your agenda, and these are warrants that we haven't discussed at any length. This one came in, it came in as a memo, I, I will add it to the proposed list so that you can vote. But Karen and I have some questions on some of the numbers, so we're not asking for any action, we're just letting you know. It came in, it was an item that the Budget Committee took out of the library's budget.
They took it out of the library budget?
They did.
What was it for?
The Assistant Library adding additional hours. And they, they, when they actually brought their budget forward, they had a few different alternatives. There was kind of A, B, and C, and it didn't, it didn't make it through.
We have to have warrants done by end of December?
Uh, no, because the...
December 15.
Budget, yes.
I think they go to Budget Committee.
Budget wants them the 15th.
So we have to act on all of them...
12.
December 12th.
Why not go next week?
We've been keeping them, you know, fairly small. There haven't been a number that you're not aware of, either they were, they're items that you see year to year, or items that were considered last year, except for that library one and the one beneath it, which we should discuss.
All right. Is that the proposed street discontinuance warrant article?
It is. And so Joan and I have been researching this item. There is a, an old Class 6 road, and I'm not sure if you can see the map, but it's on a piece of property. And it's parcel 20-18 on the map, on the tax maps. To our knowledge, we've asked everyone, it's not used. It may have been from when Route 3A went in a different direction, but it's, it's dirt, it's not used at all for anything that we can see. We have received a request from the property owner to discontinue it, which basically gives the land rights back to the property owner. There is a process with this. It involves notifying the abutters to the property and actually placing a warrant on town meeting.
Do we know where this is?
It's on CVH, and...
Does it run to the...
I believe it's Mr. Sharp.
Does it run to the Brickyard Field?
Let me Google Map it.
I can cross for Mouse.
What's the number, 254?
Oh, it's up by Mouse.
Yeah.
Oh, is it the sand pit across the street?
Yes, I think so, yes.
Yeah, that would make sense because that's in...
Yeah.
If you want to pass.
Yeah, I can Google.
Yeah.
Might help them.
He's in the lower right.
So it'd be like that. Yeah, where does that stop at, though? The one on the right? Can I just look at that on Google Maps?
So what am I looking at here?
Right here.
It's the address.
This section right here, they refer into this, right here. Yep.
457. Yes, Google 457.
457, that would be it. Because it's on the odd side.
We went way back, working with the Attorney's Office and the Deeds.
It is, yeah.
The Deed is the only place that we could find any reference to it.
It is Rick's piece.
But it does, we do have to notify the abutters at least 14 days prior to the vote.
Where is that here again? Let me just see. I'm looking at 454. Here's 454, right? See the sand pit there?
Yeah.
Is that the...
That's it, yeah, it's probably that one.
So it's the one that just goes into the pit?
Yeah, it goes diagonally.
Where'd that picture go? So it just stops in the pit, right at the hill? Okay. Do you guys want to see it on the computer here?
Oh, we got it right here.
Okay.
Hmm.
I'd say there's a sidewalk going through that too, huh?
Yeah, wasn't that that sidewalk, that one in there?
That's one Mel's.
There was one, yeah.
They had to build it then, didn't they? Somebody sold the land to Brick, his sister, if I remember right.
Okay.
I think it denoted the sidewalk.
Yep.
Four days prior to vote.
So, Jo, both Joan and I have been told that this warrant language is very specific. So, we can work with Laura Spector Morgan on, on how exactly this warrant article should be worded. Let the landowner know that that's what would happen, it would go to warrant. And then we can actually wait for a while before sending out the notices. I wouldn't, I'm not sure you'd wanna do that before January, February. You don't wanna be, to be too soon.
Yeah. But you don't wanna send it during the holiday where everybody's busy too, and they don't pay attention to it.
Right.
Cause they're busy with other things.
I'm gonna ask something, I'm gonna look really stupid, I'm just wanting it right now. Way back, when there was a, let's just say books that had certain pitches in them or something, wasn't there property put aside to where you would have that kind of a sale in the business district? Let's just say raided certain things, or the books or whatever to be sold, and I thought one of the zoning ordinances put it in an area. And they always kept referencing a sand pit. Is this, maybe it's a prior owner, I don't know. Is this the area about that? It was, it turned into a freedom of speech issue, you could sell whatever you wanted to for reading material, but I thought that the.
This is about twenty-five or thirty years ago.
Yeah, I just know it was some kind of a field you could never really build on, I don't know if that was that, or a prior owner, or.
In the back of my mind, I remember that there was, it was like an adult bookstore.
Yeah, something like that.
Situation.
Yeah.
But I don't remember.
I don't know where they zoned to put it. I know they picked a certain part of town, and I remember hearing it's in a dirt pit where nobody would ever build there. But they had to do it because constitutionally you had to have freedom of speech, and.
Yeah.
But maybe it was this owner, or the prior owner, or, or maybe it's not even this property, I just wanna make sure there's no collision with whatever happened there.
The deep recesses of my mind, I vaguely remember.
I'm sure we'll hear from the owner. Might be the prior owner, you know, or maybe it's not even this property, but.
I don't know.
Can I just look at the zoning ordinances real quick?
Thirty-plus years ago, this wasn't a pit, if I recall right.
I know they put it somewhere in town where you could, it was in a business area, so I don't know what, where it went, to get around that problem. Let me just do the zoning ordinance as quick. I'm sure I'm gonna have a talk with the owner. It's probably not that property, but I wanna make sure.
She owned it.
Just look at that, LitchfieldNH.com.
Somebody owned it before her.
Right. I can't remember the hills, I remember the hills. The two ladies used to live in that house, I remember.
Let me just do a quick look on that. Sorry to hold it up. Look at the zoning here.
Out of the road, somebody's land?
It's probably some, not even this property, but I just remember somebody telling me it was in a place you'd never build. Not that you can't build it.
Well, I believe that's part of the old contract.
Hmm? Part of what?
The contract.
It could be.
What, what's, where was that?
Trolley tracks.
The trolley track. And that was just the right away for it, okay?
Okay.
For them to go on it.
Adult sexually oriented business, this is not the conversation.
Contract disappeared, and they, it's still, it's still remnants all the way through here.
I'm just looking at that right now. Harmful to minors, IRS.
And it ought to get to the Merrimack side.
Adult bookstores, parlors, agencies, alright, this twenty-three references, let me just check it out.
Contract runs behind, I'm gonna say Mel's in the backside, I mean, not Mel's, but Upfathers, where the trucking park. Contract used to run through, down through there.
Fine, small two.
Yep, and there's a culvert down there, it's failing, so we don't have much of it.
It's in the Northern Industrial Commercial, so it is in that area. They have a boundary here, tax map, lot numbers.
Goes right behind your house.
Yeah, I thought it was right behind us.
If you go to nine fifty, if you go to the zoning ordinance, nine. Yeah, I'm looking at the maps now.
Used to ride the trolley to Manchester, that school.
Can you go to the zoning ordinance, nine fifty?
Harris did, right?
I'm sorry, we have to look it up. I know, this is.
We ordered you to go to Manchester.
High school.
LitchfieldNH.
There was no high school.
I just wanna, I just remember hearing the word dirt, and I just wanna make sure.
They all rode the trolley to Manchester, Central High School.
My mother went to Nashor High.
Well, once you're in the town, you know, LitchfieldNH.com.
Yeah, you either went to Nashor.
Did she take the trolley?
If you go to Town Department's Planning Board, look for zoning, look for nine fifty point oh oh.
As a freshman?
So, you're, I know you have to minimize your screen.
Oh, actually fourteen, yeah, back in the day.
Good drive back in the day.
Make it like eighty or ninety.
She had a thirty-nine Chevy.
So, it is in the Northern Commercial. Just, I hate to say look for a certain, look for the word adult.
Timmy showed me his. But after almost ten years.
Really?
And he found it and bought it. Bastard.
I think Steve's alone in the back.
No, Tim found it, but he had Steve go get it, yeah.
Yep. It's a, it's a beautiful.
They were the first packy store in Massachusetts.
Oh, really?
Yep.
A little ding in it, but it looks great.
Yeah, go to Planning Board, not Zoning Board.
Yeah, Barbara found a picture of that like eight or ten years ago, and she sent it to all of us, and I've been looking for it.
Even got the spelling right.
Where did she say to go to?
No color.
I just wanna make sure it's not this.
It's so small.
And if it is this property, we just gotta make sure we have something zoned somewhere else.
Sitting at your knees, and your stomach.
It's a constitutional, I remember reading this.
I was ready to buy it, except I couldn't physically get my knees behind the steering wheel.
Geez, I hope this doesn't make a difference.
He can just barely fit in it.
Alright, so that's the definition of adult.
With a shoe on.
Yeah. Do, no, keep going past that.
I'd be lucky if I can get in the bed.
The bed's nice, actually.
Really gonna be in nine fifty.
Has, has it been recon, reconstructed, do you know?
Uh, some of it maybe, but not all, you still got the, you can see the patina and everything.
Alright, I'm an adult.
It is in the, yeah.
So, it's in nine fifty, the Northern Commercial, right?
Yeah.
Nope, no, they probably touched it.
Say what, map?
Map online.
Like one fender's one color, and another fender's.
Yep.
Different shade.
It doesn't.
It's a pretty little thing now.
Let me just see if it has certain zones or tax maps.
Be in the parade next year.
Boundary of twenty-one dash one thirteen.
With his grandkids in the back.
Where are we at?
Twenty dash eighteen.
Okay.
That's where the contract comes.
I just wanna make sure, cause constitutionally you have to have an area in the town. I don't know where that piece of property is, but it's not this one. Alright.
So, it would be north.
Okay. Alright. Like I said, if it was this one, we just had to make sure we have something set us, you know.
Where are we, Mr. Chairman?
I think we're moving on to personnel policy now.
It's a little further north. It's in the same area, though, it's a little further.
North of what we were just talking about. So, personnel policy, earned time off, earned time buyout, Ms. Kleiner.
Okay. So, according to the personnel policy, which states, subject to budget limitations, the town may buy back earned time days upon, and an employee can request it. My feeling is that the only ones that could actually request on behalf of the town is the board. So, I'm not sure how this has been handled in the past, but I believe the board would actually have to make the request and allow the employees to buy back, because you do have that clause, that there are, if there's budget limitations, then that may not be an option. So, where it says that the town may buy back earned time, it's the town buying the time from the employees versus the other way around. You have to initiate it. The hard part is, this was November fifteenth through November thirtieth, that they were given to make their requests, and some employees have brought forth requests. Then you get to the budget side of the equation. And you have the Expendable Trust Fund, which has fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and five dollars in it. But, just wages alone, we have requests between, you had a, a couple buyouts of employees that left earlier, that resulted in twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one. You have seven employees who have made earned time buyout requests, which is eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. And then you have an employee who's leaving soon, who has ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars in earned time. So, that totals fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-three oh eight. So, we're basically.
According to red?
Yeah.
Didn't we just go over this with Troy? Didn't we do some kind of policy, like just?
So, this is a policy that's actually.
He, he had changed some things that if you didn't give it two weeks notice, you only got half.
Half, yeah, I remember all that, yep.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the money is in the fund, that's just the wages only.
Yeah.
So, the taxes, and limited retirement would, only some people are eligible for, would still hit the budget. But the wages themselves could come out of the trust fund.
So, the question is, what is it?
I think, in future, I'd probably bring this forward in October, so that the board can have a conversation, so that it's clear to everyone, including the employees, that it's, it's the town that's asking to buy it back and lower actually a liability that the town has, right? It's not the employees being able so much to request it, at least the way it's legally written.
I've never been a big fan of this, and I think maybe going forward that we need to establish some kind of policy where you use it or lose it, because it's costing us a fortune.
Yeah.
When somebody leaves.
I agree.
In the past, we paid a lot of money out for a few employees that have left.
Yep.
You know, this.
You leave, that's it, bye.
They, they need to use their time.
That's why I'm a fan of the whole paid time off that we've been talking about.
I agree with that.
Yep.
You know, use it or lose it at the end.
It'd be hard to do to the people that are already working here and established, but I mean, for future hires, I think we need to look at making that a, a town policy.
Cause it's a huge liability for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a huge, generally unfunded liability for most municipalities. Which is, is why really buying back the time has become a thing of the. But there are still a major, many municipalities who will pay out a percentage of, of time if you should leave. Which may be why you came up with the policy that you did about having to give two weeks' notice, and. And most municipalities have a cap on how much you can carry forward.
You know, they'll say, well, we never had a buyback policy. You know, you went to work, that's it. You didn't, you lose it.
Well, we really don't have a whole lot of options.
Yeah, if it's the rule now, we have to go by it, but I think we look into changing the rule going forward.
I agree.
I agree. Karen, what do you think the tax is worth in retirement?
Not everybody's eligible, so far just one person is eligible for New Hampshire State Retirement on that, the others aren't. Social, the police doesn't pay, but I think there's only a couple of those, and then you have the Medi. So, it was probably with the retirement, I think it was about three thousand dollars with the retirement taxes.
So, what action do we have to take tonight?
I would recommend a motion to approve the earned time payouts and ask for a transfer from the Expendable Trust Fund to cover the fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-three oh eight.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. LaSalle's.
Second.
Second by Mr. Larry. All those in favor, Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
I am also an aye, motion carries five zero zero. Next, we have tax cap illustration.
So, I'm gonna pass them down, because it's an awful lot of information, and I just wanted to kind of break the subject tonight, cause I know you're gonna wanna look it over. But, looking, I know it has been stated that we really need to look at the tax cap, and what happens with the tax cap. So, in doing so, went to the other municipalities who have a tax cap within New Hampshire. And three, Summersworth, Rochester, and Dover, all use very similar methods. The only difference being, they all use the CPIU urban. The only difference being is Rochester uses the prior year, and the others use a, a more of a three-year average. So, if you're using a three-year average, it's not as high, because you had a few years where it was two-point-one, two-point-three before it shot up. But what I tried to do on the first page was look at exactly what would this mean for Litchfield if you used a method similar to these communities, where you're actually taking the prior year's budget, you're adjusting it by the CPIU, you're adjusting it by what they call new construction, so any change in assessment due to new construction, because that's new taxes, right? So, you're adding that into the equation. And in, there's, there's pros and cons here, because it depends upon the time, which to some might make sense. In the past, there would have been a couple of years where this wouldn't have actually lowered. The one hundred and seventy-five that you currently have would have been more than the CPIU.
Yep.
This year, it would have only resulted in about eighty thousand dollars of additional room. Which, I mean, it, that eighty thousand might have been enough where some of the cuts that had to be made could have been saved. Next year, I, I believe is the year that you really become into some dire consequences, because the CPIU goes up to eight and a half. And if you're averaging it out, and you're using a hundred and seventy-five thousand as a tax cap, you're leaving about four hundred thousand on the table if you switch to this method that's widely used. And the CPIU, I mean, it's widely used across the country, just for that reason, when you have years. When you have years of high inflation over budgeted items like utilities and. And uh contracts and things that you can't control, that's when you need it. And then years when those fall and the inflation's not as bad, you don't. Um, so there's a number of calculations, I I tried to lay it all out, the second page. Um, talks to where we're picking up that uh new construction. Assessment, uh which is part of the calculation. I did talk uh to Avatar and they could in April calculate this out for us. Um, even closer than I'm able to get it now, because we're we're past, I had to take it right from the MS one. Um, I attached um a copy so you could see where we're taking the CPIU. And then just um some basic illustrations of the other communities which I based this on. So I thought it would give you an opportunity to kind of look through it. Maybe nothing that Litchfield is willing to do, but it is something that's that's pretty widely known. I'm not sure, you know, I I understand some people's um concern. Over spending and at least I think a method like this still preserves some of that.
Flexibility.
But it gives you enough flexibility.
Yeah.
Where next year, next year I'd be concerned with a hundred and seventy five thousand. In a tax cap, you're cut cutting services.
Yep, yep.
I mean, to me, if you have the big years, where like loo- looking at the first page here where you have twenty nineteen at. Five hundred and forty two thousand dollars, I mean, if you tell. If you tell the town or even the school or whatever that, hey, you can go up five hundred and forty two thousand dollars, they're gonna do it. And then all of a sudden, that becomes your budget the following year, you know, the the number that you have plus that number and. It, to me, it's it's a way to steamroll a budget higher and higher and higher. I would be in more in favor of just a percent number. I think, I don't know where we're at now, based on this, I would guess we're around two, two percent for a hundred and seventy five? But, I mean. Going, having a fluctuating scale, I mean, when you get the big years, it, to me, it seems like it's gonna. It's gonna lead to a lot of spending, not only that year, but then the year after and the year after.
Yes, so I got, so um back in twenty twenty one. I think you see that large amount, because um and this I don't think is an indication of every year. You had quite a bit of new construction.
Yeah.
So I think we got the Firefly, the homes.
Yeah, yeah. So. Probably still well established.
So that gave you room, cause that's new taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yep, new revenue, yeah.
And. But I wouldn't say that that's the norm.
No.
Um.
No, cause that was a big project that went really fast. Um, and even the ones up the up the north end now, the stage uh hu- uh the horse farm. I don't know that it's gonna go that quickly, and I don't know if the numbers are gonna match up with what we got here. Um, I don't think it will, I don't think there's any way it's going to do that.
Right, I don't think it would be done by April first, so.
Yeah.
Or even, well, maybe April first of the next phase.
I I know he was gonna do it in three phases, I just don't know how quickly the phases.
That's what I thought too.
In.
So it depends on the market.
Yeah, right.
And the markets.
Homes and material costs and everything else.
Yeah.
You've got intersections worse.
Yep.
So li- like last year, using this method, you would have lost forty five thousand.
Yeah, well, yeah, only with a hundred thirty eight.
So, I mean.
Absolutely.
It. It has its uh benefits.
Well, you wouldn't have lost forty five thousand, you would have had less to spend. So.
Okay.
So. Thank you for pulling that together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, we have a budget update.
Karen, I I don't know if anything's changed since last.
Uh-uh.
Time we are together.
Uh-uh.
Still waiting in budget committee. Um, is still reviewing schools from what I'm aware of. Um.
They're done reviewing, they're gonna stop voting on Thursday.
Has anything come out of Concord that is pertinent? For revenues, texts?
Oh yeah, so we got our rooms and meals, right, did we talk about that the last one?
I thought we did.
We did the last one.
Yeah, our rooms and meals came in um a little bit higher, um but they didn't think they were gonna be as high as that for next year. So she recommended budgeting um a little bit less. Um, so you never know, but they came in, highway block didn't come in mu- much higher at all. Um, and the other one was State Forest, which was like, I don't know, eleven dollars or something, but.
Workman's comp rates came in lower.
Yep.
So that's where the budget committee now going into. Uh, voting, it's about, the budget's currently about seventeen thousand under the cap.
Is there anything outstanding? As far as our budget goes?
Well, I think most of the concerns that we've heard so far are with the fire department. Recreation and the police department. Are the cuts that the budget committee made in those three areas. Um, which unfortunately is a lot more than seventeen thousand dollars, but. I think it it will be a tou- a really tough year. Um.
It is what it is, we don't like it, but it is what it is.
All right, next we have warrant articles draft only, Ms. Claire.
Um, so we did just start with these, um. The one that you're familiar with that was brought up earlier tonight is the fire engine. So unfortunately, because it didn't pass last year, up went the cost.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, November eighth, they quoted us a price of seven ninety one. Um, and if you take off the a trade in and um a prepayment discount. It totals about seven hundred and fifty three less if we. The recommendation of the CIP committee passed of three hundred and seventy five thousand. From ARPA would get you, you know, um, down. Unfortunately, in March, when town meeting comes, they're saying add another ten percent. For cost increase. So the longer it takes um to make the purchase, the more expensive that it does get. Um, I will say that the health agencies committee is meeting this Wednesday at nine AM. So that we can go through the requests from the various agencies and bring those forward. Um, to you, um, and then we can finish that warrant article.
That one's usually what, twenty, twenty five thousand? It's somewhere around there, it usually comes.
Yeah, twenty five.
Yes, and I, and the requests were a slight lower this year.
Sure.
That in comparison um to last year. Um, but most of the warrant articles that you'll see are the same. There's the adding money to the what, to the fire expendable trust. Adding sixty thousand to the public works expend- expendable trust, which they used this year. Um, there's adding some money to the welfare trust, because we know that this is gonna be. A very rough season for residents. Um, there hasn't, and then the fire, the weekend wages that they asked for. Did I?
Library.
In the library. So, if there's others, we can, we can add them. If anyone has anything else that they'd like, so that you can vote on the twelfth. And planning has not met or confirmed any, um, I did check with Joan today.
But you thought there was like four of them coming?
Oh yeah, we do, we had some state regulation changes that we just are gonna update our ordinances with. Yeah, I'll talk about a couple more that might be coming, but not this year. Be political footballs for a while. But yeah, we expect probably four. And then the metal detecting one, right, we'll get, if that's not a policy, if it's gonna be going to be an ordinance.
If, you know, if we're going to look at the fire engine, I should reach out and get updated lease payment. Um, numbers, that uh kind of all. Um, is contingent upon, we'll use our ARPA money, we'll get, you know. So there's some pieces which I've been waiting um not to do. Oh, the property revaluation, twenty five thousand, that's a standard. Um. I I think that was it, yeah.
The weekend coverage, do we don't have a um a a number for that, tax impact?
We do not.
Okay.
Um, so.
Cause that's not coming from unassigned funds, that's gotta be voted in.
Yep.
Yes, yep, that does have a tax impact. So we'll finish these up. Um, and get you good solid numbers for the twelfth.
On the fire engine, I I'm still, I still think that the people have to vote whether they want a new fire engine or not, and vote for the cost. Um, I don't think using the ARPA funds here is. Is the right thing to do, I think the people have to decide if they want a new fire engine and. I mean, the f- give the fire department a ton of credit for being able to get the other one completely refurbished. And we save the taxpayers a lot of money, they should look at that and maybe, you know, say, okay, it's it's time to pony up for a new vehicle. And there's a lot of things that the ARPA funds can be used for and. Um, I I think that this is such a necessity that I think the people should be able to weigh it and. And say, you know, yeah, we we need this for the town.
When do we have to have the ARPA funds earmarked by? Is it time we have to have them earmarked or time we have to spend them by?
Twenty twenty four? Earmarked twenty twenty six.
To spend.
To to spend, yeah, so twenty twenty four has to be committed.
Mm-hmm.
When in twenty twenty four?
By December thirty first.
Okay, end of it.
We have two years.
Yep. I just knew we had dates there, I just couldn't remember where they were. Okay, town administrator report.
So there's not a lot that we haven't already discussed here, um, the budget. Uh, CIP's meeting tomorrow night, December sixth, they will. Um, have a public hearing at the planning board, and then they'll be on your agenda for December twelfth as well. Um, the final tax uh warrant went out. Um, so that was um about eleven point six. We have collected already thirteen point eight five percent, so that was pretty quick. Um, and today, I can tell you, that office was extremely busy. Um, so over six hundred thousand dollars worth today.
End of the month.
Alone and.
Registering cars.
Yeah, they were straight out.
Pay their tax bills before it goes up.
Um, so, um, to uh Mister Larry's point a little, a little while ago. Um, we looked at the numbers, so there was a two million dollars uh payment to the schools. For December, we looked at the numbers, tax bills went out late, right, we knew that because we were held up getting our tax rate. Um, so we did reach out to the school, um, and agreed we would pay one million. Um, and then wait about a week and a half and pay the other million when we know that some of these large. Uh, tax payments come in to to keep the cash flow even, so. Um, then there is a brand new NH uh PIFAS. Uh, website, so the state has gone in and they have completed a new website. It has a very highly interactive map, which shows all the sampling. And you can drill down on it uh to see exactly where the locations are. And now they are talking about, and they just had a session, um, a webinar session. On some of these study reimbursements and some of these grants that they're making available. Which will flow into twenty twenty three, it's mostly spring of twenty twenty three, is a lot of the deadlines. So there is money out there if it is PIFAS related. And it it will take into consideration um treatment for design services. Or con- consolidation studies, it's pretty wide open. So. Maybe something we wanna look at.
Okay, thank you, selectmen report, Ms. Queenen.
I get to go first. Planning board, we met on November fifteenth. Um, we are going over the zoning ordinances where we voted to approve the wording, so we'll get them here. Um, there is some discussion on home occupancy zoning ordinances, we've had some home occupancy. People come in for making guns or selling guns, and it's legal. Um, but we might, there there's a discussion about can you park cars there or not have a sign out front kind of thing to keep it more conspicuous, you know. Inconspicuous, but we need to pass it by legal, it's just a discussion at this point, but I think some people are concerned about that. But again, we'll pass it by legal, because federally, if you're allowed to do it, we have to bow down to that, but we just, we're exploring that. Um, a workshop is gonna start, um, I think at the beginning of the year to explore changing. The possibility of the northern commercial industrial to maybe a part of it be mixed use or a district overlay. And the reason that's happening is it's going to be developed. And it's gonna either gonna be industrial looking, small warehouses or shopping, whatever, or it can be. Some homes in the front to keep it looking that way with some businesses in the back or, but there's gonna be a discussion about that. The economic model of the town twenty five, thirty years ago was keep the commercial at both ends of the town, right, north and south and keep it. Residential and agricultural in the middle, so if you switch it to some of it being mixed use, what's the tax impact of that? Of course, there's nothing there right now, but, so there's gonna be a discussion about that, maybe some renderings and a workshop, you know. So people can see what it'll look like if it stays industrial, and what will it look like if it is mixed. So we will invite the public to do our usual surveys kind of thing. Um, that's not gonna, you know, move quickly, we can't get it done by this year, obviously, we wouldn't, we want a lot of feedback and interaction with that. And and our PC is still trying to get the engineering firm that did all of the um signage and stop signs and road painting. Um, uh, sir, remember they did a, uh, I'm sorry about that, they um, we brought in experts, right, to look at the roads. Remember people going through the stop signs and to look at all of that legally, so we're waiting to get that back. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December sixth at seven PM here at the town hall. Um, heritage commission, I reached out to them to see if maybe a zoning ordinance might come of that. About uh the demolition ordinance to just try to clean up the. You know, if it's a shed, what was it, a shed, a structure greater than equal to five hundred feet, the zoning ordinances says one thing. Uh, greater than five hundred feet, where, you know, the um flow chart said greater than or. flow charts said greater than or equal to, so it's a little stuff like that, it's just a minor cleanup, so I'm not sure if there's one.
Any feedback?
I have not, I don't know when your next meeting is, so.
Next week, I would assume.
I was, we'll see Marion tomorrow night at another meeting and I'll just remind her to see if she can reach out. But I sent it to everybody for you guys to decide. Oh, and that was the other thing about the rolling year, right? Was anything prior to nineteen sixty being demolished where we might not hard code nineteen sixty? You might want it to be a little more rolling, just say seventy-five years or older or something like that. Okay, so Capital Improvement Plan. All right, we met on November fourteenth. Uh, we had a collision, you and I, because we were having, on our Board of Selectmen meeting here while that was going on at the fire station. At that meeting, they did finalize the SIP plan. Um, we can talk about that in a little bit. Um, Jay Mankara was trying to get, so that was the fourteenth, we had Planning Board on the fifteenth. So we were trying to get it ready for one day, but he didn't have enough time to make a report in less than twenty-four hours, right? So, so even though the plan has been, um, supposedly, um, all the analysis is done, we are meeting tomorrow, um, six-thirty here at the Town Hall. We'll put together the PowerPoint presentation and have the SIP Committee do a final review of it. There will be no SIP meeting on December fifth. Instead, on December sixth, we'll have the public hearing, uh, which will be held during the Planning Board meeting. If that makes sense, so the Planning Board gets it first. And then December twelfth, which is our meeting, um, it'll be presented to the Board of Selectmen. Okay? So there's a lot going on there. NRPC, our next full quarterly, uh, Commissioner meeting will be held Wednesday, December twenty-first at seven PM at NRP's office, uh, at Thirty Temple Street in Nashua. I did go to the NHMA, uh, seminars, I did mine online. Uh, the ethics one, uh, I will update you on, it wasn't, it's stuff we pretty much knew. There were two land use board seminars I went to and I was, I will write up a little report for you. It was kind of interesting, especially on the Planning Board side. Some of these drawings you can actually have, um, you must start building by two years and you must finish by five years kind of thing, and they were getting into the legalese of that. But it's hard if you need a permit, like if you're near the Merrimack River or something and it, or, you know, or in a state road, right? It can take you a year to get your permit, so you're already in trouble if you start hard coding those dates. So anyway, that, that was, and there was other, uh, issues that were interesting on that.
You have five years to build?
Yeah. Well, what happened was, I think somebody, and I'm, I'm gonna get it wrong, but somebody went before the Planning Board for maybe an elderly development, fifty-five and older. They got all the approval and, and all the variances, and then they didn't do anything for five years. And they came back and said, I have a different idea, I wanna do this instead. So they went through the approval process, different variances, they didn't do anything. Then he came back and said, I liked option one. So the variances that he had passed back then, he wanted to still apply, you know, twelve, thirteen years later, and they're like, you can't, so they went into all the legal about that.
My, my grandfather got engaged to my grandmother, but they would not wed until he built her house. It took him eleven years. That would have never passed today's standards.
That's funny.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Awkward things take time.
Yep.
In the meantime, they had four kids.
That's a hell of an engagement.
Um, we're still waiting to hear about the Corning Road three intersection to see where that, if it passed phase two of getting past DOT, which is supposed to be the end of November, but I haven't heard yet. Um, Board of Selectmen, the only update I have here is about the metal detecting policy on town load and, low, town-owned land. Um, I'm down to Bo, New Hampshire and Durham, New Hampshire. Um, both are pretty much the same, it's just, uh, the state has rules about historical sites. One doesn't mention it at all, so it's just implied, and other one used parts of it where it's explicit, so you got implicit and explicit. So I'll give you both and you can decide which one. I'm just, I will give you the law, there's like four laws that you can decide when we get on the twelfth. Does that need a public hearing? Would it be that same day or, because it sounds like you need these things by the fifteenth, right? If this is approved, like the, like the, the Board of, uh, not the Board, the Planning Board is also having a public hearing on the SIP the same day, so we get the two weeks in, or the ten days. So if, uh, I can get it to you by Friday if you guys wanna look at it for the twelfth. It's not gonna be as complicated as the ethics.
We wanna do that.
So.
We'd want it for Friday for your agenda.
Yeah.
Yep, so you'll already have it and you'll just have the four historical society law, you know, not society, but historic laws. Just to make sure we're not trouncing on that. So if you wanna, I don't know, was it a week or ten days? I don't know what the notification is to the public, but if you want the public hearing that night, we're gonna get it on the agenda. Unless you say you don't want the policy.
Ten days.
Ten days, yeah.
Yeah. Do we, okay, so.
We have time.
Yep, all right. I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Recreation Commission, we meet next Tuesday. School facility improvement, we don't meet until December fourteenth. Still airing.
Budget meets Thursday, we start, um, going through the school budget, looking for whatever cuts are gonna be made next few weeks. That's about it.
Mr. Lynch?
Conservation was here tonight, explained everything we just talked about.
Mr. LaSalle's.
Don't really have any update. The, uh, uh, Heritage Commission did not meet in November, but we're supposed to meet in December. Uh, based upon a call of the chair, so.
Okay, thank you.
They won't make the ordinance on time then.
Being that it's eight o'clock, we'll open it to public input. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide input? Seeing none, we'll close public input.
It's supposed to be at six-thirty.
No, earlier than six-forty-five.
Very gray area.
We do have one more item this evening, it's a non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three-two C Reputation. We have a motion to go into non-public.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. LaSalle's.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Lynch, roll call, vote, Ms. Queenen.
Aye.
I am also a yes. Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's?
Aye.
We are now going into non-public. Thank you for tuning in and everyone be well.